Good morning. We will now call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners in Benton County to order. I'd like to start by acknowledging the fact that we are on Kalapuea lands. The Kalapuea peoples were removed from these lands under the Royal Land Treaty to co-strange reservations, but they're still with us at the Grand Braun Confederated Tribes and the Sault Ste. Marie Confederated Tribes. I'm Zan Ojero, Chair of the Board of Commissioners this year, and we'll do a round of introductions.
Pat Mullin, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Corley, County Council.
Eric Milo, Board Reporter.
Gulea Nethol, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Kate Portia, Portospen County, and Max Falls Office. Good morning.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
April Holland, Department.
Joe Holland, Equity Diversity Inclusion Coordinator. You may approach us.
Theresa Farley, Board Staff.
Elizabeth Rass, Public Information Officer.
Okay, I think we have a couple more people with us. We have Under Sheriff Greg Ridler and Economic Development Officer Kate Portia. So with that, we will move on into our agenda. Are there any comments from the public? Are there any announcements? Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, with that, we will consider the agenda adopted and move on into our work session. Our work session this morning is an item updating us on the operations of the Department Operations Center. Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland, welcome.
Good morning. We are in the process at the Department Operations Center of moving forward with clinic activity, which is sort of in focus and described in more detail to you. And I believe late last week, I updated the commissioners and the COVID executive team with our most recent risk metrics, even though there is no longer a risk metric framework. Quite late last week, the Oregon Health Authority did publish their weekly update, and we in Benton County are at 44.4 cases per 100,000 individuals. So since that number is below 50, that puts us firmly into the low-risk category, and we're at a 2.2% test positivity rate. I think testing volumes has decreased quite a bit for a variety of reasons that April can probably explain better than I can. And even though we remain before the risk framework was listed, we were already operating in the low-risk category due to our higher vaccination rate. It is good to know that by our actual case count, we're there as well. I don't know if the Oregon Health Authority is going to continue to publish those weekly statistics or not. April may know more about this at this point in time. I know that lots of detail related to the listing of the framework was still coming out. There are lots of questions yet to be answered about some of those details, and whatever we don't have currently, I'm sure we'll continue to roll in over the course of this week. But we do have the ability, of course, to count cases in Benton County ourselves, and April actually tracks that daily. So we can provide whatever information or updates are needed at any point in time, and we'll certainly be the first to see if we have any spikes in the wrong direction. So with that, I would bring it over to April.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Yes, just to add a little bit to the case count picture right now, all of the days of reporting last week were either zero, ones, and one-two. So we are enjoying low case numbers right now, which is really wonderful. In terms of what's going to be reported by OHA, we're still waiting on that, but please rest assured that we are continuing to look at cases every single day, and we'll absolutely alert you if anything concerning comes up. So overall, the Department Operations Center is continuing its mission of COVID vaccination with an emphasis on vaccinating underserved populations. Our staffing levels are good, and we'll likely experience some reduction in staffing as we move into August as we continue to the process of normalizing COVID response and recovery within public health. Our BIPOC-focused community clinic, scheduled to be at LandisFalling on June 27th, was moved to the Boys and Girls Club due to the heat that we experienced that day, particularly it was on that Sunday when we hit 109. So a huge thanks to Helen and Clay Higgins, who allowed that last-minute change to happen. That clinic was in partnership with Samaritan Mobile Medicine, and it was sponsored by many community organizations, including Casa Latina Zanitos, the Corpus Albany Chapter of the NAACP, the Corpus Multicultural Literacy Center, OSU Extension Service, and the International Moms Group, among others. And despite the 109 heat, we are able to serve up 65 vaccinations, including at least 23 doses to minors. And to help offset the cost of folks coming out to the clinic, we were able to provide $25 gift cards to all vaccinated to multicultural array of local groceries and restaurants. We also had popsicles, which were great for the heat. And to make the whole event a little sweeter, we were able to vaccinate the ice cream vendor as well. And our vaccination, our immunization staff Cindy was thrilled to run the popsicle stand while the popsicle vendor was being vaccinated. So it was a really good day and a great success in reaching underserved populations. This week will be a really busy one with an eye toward geographic disparities. We've got five OHA FEMA-sponsored clinics in Monroe, Alcee, and Fallomis. Monroe event will be today, tomorrow, and Thursday from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. Fallomis will have an add-on clinic this afternoon from 4:00 to 7:00. And Wednesday, tomorrow, will be out in Alcee from 4:00 to 7:00. Both Pfizer and J&amp;J vaccines will be available at these clinics, and each person vaccinated will receive a food box. And thanks to a late-breaking offer from the Governor's Task Force, $100 in grocery gift cards as well. As we all are aware, the Governor's Executive Order ended 6:30, or sorry, was implemented on 6:30, and it ended COVID restrictions in most settings, including those around mask-wearing, distancing, and capacity limits. Overall, you know, as I mentioned, our cases are down. Our vaccination picture is looking good in Benton County with 64.3% of the entire population, including those not yet eligible, with one dose, and 61% of the entire county with a completed dose series. And it's my job to remind everyone that we aren't done. We still have a lot to do with vaccination. We've got gaps in vaccination in some ethnic racial subgroups. 60% of the white population is vaccinated here versus 47% of the Latinx community, 40% of the Black community, and 38% in the Pacific Islander community. Geographically, we also have disparities. Most concerning are the communities of Blodgett and Alcee, and we have work to do in other places as well. Next, you know, I just want to remind everyone that the landscape is ever-changing. The pandemic isn't over, and we continue to learn new information constantly. Want you all to know that public health will continue to track and respond to COVID. Just because masking mandates and distancing aren't enforced doesn't mean that isolation and quarantine are going away. We'll still investigate cases and outbreaks. The public health will continue to narrow gaps in vaccination and respond when more people become eligible for vaccination. We're going to keep watch on the world, state, and local landscape, and we're going to keep leadership and the public informed with accurate and trusted information. I'd be remiss not to mention the Delta variant, something I'm sure you've all been hearing about. Speaking of the changing landscape, this is a more contagious variant of concern. It's spreading about 50% faster than the Alpha variant previously known as the UK variant, which spreads 50% faster than the original strain of the variant. So it's quickly overtaking cases in the U.S. as the most dominant form. And unvaccinated people are at highest risk of infection and of severe outcomes and death. Another piece of the puzzle is, you know, children and COVID. Kids 0 to 11 aren't yet eligible for vaccination, and so they do remain vulnerable. We'll also, you know, speaking of seeing cases and hospitalizations, at some point, we're not going to be surprised when we do see areas with low vaccination rates, see hyper-local outbreaks, which in some areas of the state could impact the hospital systems. Overall, more is being learned every day about Delta. Questions about how much it evades vaccine. There's lots of reporting that you may be hearing in the news about our mRNA vaccine and J&amp;J's effectiveness with Delta. However, in the end, being fully vaccinated is the best protection against the Delta variant, with emphasis on the "fully." We really are working on getting people back for that second shot. We want everyone to be fully vaccinated, and waiting that two weeks after the final shot in the series gives the best protection available. Just a bit of more looking out beyond our borders. I think it's important to consider the local context. You know, as I mentioned, we have low cases right now. We've got pretty good vaccine coverage that will continue to improve. In some areas, you know, the WHO has a worldwide lens, and so they are recommending that people stay masked indoors. Los Angeles County, as we know, is a very densely populated area, or has many densely populated areas, and they've reinstated their indoor masking recommendations. So we'll continue to monitor the data and make data-informed recommendations to you at leadership. Finally, I just want to mention that we may see businesses continue to require people to wear masks if they choose to as a condition of providing services. You know, you might see no shoes, no shirt, no masks, no service. I wouldn't be surprised if that mask is out there somewhere now. We don't want to see people shamed for wearing masks, and we don't want to see people shamed for not wearing masks. Everyone has their own, you know, risk to consider, and we want to honor those decisions that each individual and each family makes. So that's my update for today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I do have one or two questions, April. One is with respect to our own COVID dashboard. Are we going to keep that up on a weekly basis?
Thank you. I put out some feelers on that on Friday, and the dashboard that public health maintains, it will be updated weekly for now. And we will let you know if we anticipate any changes on that front. Any other dashboards, I can't speak specifically to those, but the public health dashboards will be.
Okay, thank you. And my other question, actually, I'll defer to Pat if he has questions about your report, and then I have another question for you.
I do appreciate the update, April, and I think you hit all the right topics. My concern is that people think, some people think we're done, and happy days are here again. And my concern is we have a couple months before school starts up. The weather changes, and we have more indoor activities than outdoor, and just concerned and supportive of any and all messages that we can get out that this thing ain't over. And we've got 25% of the population that's, or more, that's not vaccinated, and Benton County is doing relatively well, really well. But just, I would encourage you to keep getting the word out, and that you mentioned pockets, that unvaccinated people in certain areas. My image is kind of like spot fires, and we're good here, but there's a fire starting over there, and oh, there's one behind us. And so just encouraging you to keep doing what you're doing and hope that the message gets to the people that it needs to so that we're in good shape come September.
Thank you, Commissioner. I certainly share your concerns around, you know, seasonal changes and people gathering, and absolutely agree that emphasizing that our vaccination rates, as they currently are, do not equal herd immunity. We are not done. The pandemic is not over, and much is sure to unfold in the coming months. I'm so grateful for the leadership of our county and our board in taking the pandemic seriously, and I believe that the Benton County community at large, although we are all weary, is listening to the messages about that uncertainty and about remaining vigilant. And we will certainly continue to, you know, somewhat delicately, but assertively make those messages very clear.
Well, and a consistent message, I think, will help. And I guess my other question, at this point, ages 12 and older are eligible for being vaccinated? Is that the right number?
That's the right number, yes, sir.
And there's, things are in the works to get younger people added to that category, younger ages?
That's right. Well, that's what we're hearing, is that sometime in the fall, we expect Pfizer and perhaps even Moderna to apply for EUA use of the vaccines in people younger than 12. We don't know what the age range specifically will be, and we don't have a specific timeline. It would be our preference, obviously, to get everyone vaccinated now before school starts. But I think that we're somewhat at the mercy of that analysis that's being completed from the clinical trials. But we are absolutely ready to go, and we really have been doing a lot of thinking about how youth 0 to 11, or whatever the age range may be, can be best served when they're eligible for vaccination. Everything points to children being served in trusted spaces, in their medical homes. And now we've got a partnership with Samaritan to be a, they are a hub for Pfizer vaccine and can get vaccines to individual pediatric offices so that vaccines can remain stable. You know, the Pfizer vaccine has very specific handling requirements that can be very difficult. Of course, just relying on the pediatric offices alone won't do the trick, and so we'll likely be looking at the school-based pharmacy pediatric offices, a number of strategies to ensure that we can get youth vaccinated as soon as they're eligible for that.
Great. Last question. When I asked this a month and a half ago, people showing up for the second shot was in the 95% range. Is that percentage still holding?
You know, it's probably not holding quite as high. It's above 90%. Still, I haven't had a very recent look at it because Samaritan's been our partner in tracking that. But that's a great reminder to get it up to date for some of our more recent events. I'm really interested in tracking and incentivizing coming back for the second dose. I'm really interested in tracking and incentivizing coming back for the second dose particularly so that we can get people fully vaccinated. I know that the number is still very high, but I don't want to misinform you, so that will be a project for me to get that back to you.
Great. Thanks for answering my questions, and thank you for your considerable efforts on our behalf.
You're very welcome. Thank you as well.
Thank you. April, I have an unrelated question, and that is about our heat emergency and about the cooling centers that you all helped to get going in collaboration with lots of different community-based organizations and support from Sierra, from the emergency management team, and I was wondering how those had gone and whether they were well utilized? Do we have any sense for that? I know that a lot of other areas had fatalities related to heat, and I don't believe we did, but would love to have a little debrief about how that went, that very rushed project.
Sure, yes. It was a bit of a scramble, and we're so grateful that we were able to coordinate with our emergency planner and many in the city, many local facilities were stood up. Yeah, so it's interesting, you know, heat emergencies are something new, newer. They don't happen very often here, and many of the home center areas don't have air conditioning. After consulting with state and regional emergency contacts, we made a plan to identify cooling centers across the county to operate through that weekend of the 26th and 27th. We focused in on target populations, including people experiencing homelessness, seniors, and then the very young and very old, and those with underlying health conditions. We're able to establish cooling centers at C-3 or the Corvallis Community Center, thanks to the City of Corvallis, the men's shelter, the community shelter, several outdoor shade stations with ice, bottled water, handheld fans, misters, hydration packets, things to help people stay cool. The Monroe Center for Arts in the Courthouse building there, I believe, at Elsie School, Phelomis Fire Station, and a church in Phelomis. We utilized Benton County volunteers to help support some of these sites, and as well as a few Red Cross volunteers, but these wouldn't have been possible without the help of those who offered up their sites. Our community stepped up to meet the need, and we're so grateful. In terms of utilization, C-3 was the most used cooling center. We had some concerns that were brought up around people and their pets, because as we know, pets are also susceptible to the dangers of high heat and high temperatures. And so our team connected with Safe Haven Humane and gathered crates to take to all of the cooling centers so that people's pets could be indoors and stay safe, and then, you know, that also just allows people to feel like they will, you know, not often enjoy a service if their pets aren't also welcome. Some, a couple of the centers were not used, but they were there. The majority had at least a handful of people at them, and so if those people were able to stay cool despite the really dangerous temperatures out there, then in my mind, they are worth it. I did speak with DA Harrelson to confirm that there were no, as of Friday, no heat-related deaths have been reported in the county due to, in that timeframe. Moving forward, you know, it's likely that we'll experience more of these heat events. We've been asking a lot of questions as to, you know, what a plan looks like. Is it a state plan that we tailor to our local needs? Is it something that is shared between emergency management with some public input? I think that we should all, we should be at the table together to help inform the needs of the community. So, yeah, we're working with our county, regional, and state partners, and we really need to prioritize the planning for these extreme weather events. We already have our plan sort of outlined. I think some of the gaps are around whether an emergency is declared in terms of funding and ensuring that we can implement in a timely manner.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, part of what you're thinking about is what would be the trigger, the threshold for an emergency declaration? And, yeah, I think there's, we're not in there quite yet, but, yeah, we definitely need to be thinking about that moving forward, and fire risk is yet another one of those. So we, coming up on this Fourth of July weekend, I think that everyone was on pins and needles, and we need to be thinking about next year and what, when we want to start watching those weather forecasts and how we want to plan in advance.
Agreed. Thanks.
Well, and I'd like to put a plug in for the weather forecast that I think gave us at least four or five days' notice and pretty accurate, and congratulations on pulling things together on short notice, and I would encourage the planning for, I mean, I read, well, this is a once-in-a-thousand-year event. Well, I wouldn't put too much stock in that it's going to be 1,000 years before the next one. So, planning is essential, and once again, congratulations for figuring things out on very short notice.
I'm glad that we were able to make it happen, and just, you know, to be clear, we just started asking around a few days before, once we noticed the forecasts were creeping up and started to come up with that framework for that plan that was implemented. Yeah, and I couldn't agree more, Commissioner Malone. We absolutely need to be prepared because we're not, we're no longer waiting for the climate crisis. We are going to continue to experience events like this, and extreme cold, extreme heat as we move forward.
Sad but true.
Yeah, given change, the past is not a predictor of the future, so we have to be very careful about those probabilities that are based on past experience. Okay, are there any other questions for our public health staff?
Commissioner, I don't have a question, but I just have a comment regarding our staff. I noticed in the statistics that Suzanne sent out most recently, that Benton County continues to be, I believe, in the top three counties relative to number of members or residents vaccinated, and so I just think that's a tribute to the work that our Health Department is doing, the Department of Operations Center is doing, and so I continue to be impressed with the impact that we're making, and a lot of that is due directly to the result of our employees and our commitment to continuing to encourage people to get vaccinated and providing them opportunities to do so. So, thanks Suzanne and April, and thanks to your staff for the work that they're doing. It was great to continue to see us leading the pack out of 36 counties, being in the top four. I think speaks a lot to the work that you've done.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add on to that. The vaccine effort is outstanding, but I think from the beginning, Benton County took the COVID very seriously, and I think we have the numbers, relatively low numbers of hospitalizations, infection rates, and deaths, that some of our neighboring counties don't look so good, and part of that's just kind of mixed messages, and I think Benton County has been consistent from the start that this is serious, and even though we may not have a clear roadmap where we should be headed, we did take it seriously, and I think our overall results are outstanding, and make sure the frontline folks get that word, that their efforts made a real difference, and the statistics, the data proves that out.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on then. Normally, at this time, we would be taking a break between our work session and our business meeting. However, since we have such a light agenda today, we're going to move on with no break. So the next item of business is our consent calendar, which contains ratification and adoption of Resolution 2021-022 rescinding the requirement for personal use of face masks or cloth face coverings, appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees, and approval of May 25, 2021, board meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, all in big papers, and I, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Somehow, I'm having trouble tripping over my tongue today. Next item is a report from outside agencies, business, rather, Kate Portia, discussion and decision to approve our FY 2123 Economic Development IGA.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's nice to see everyone on this fine July day. We put together a chapter course that's in your packet, and that begins on page 37 of your electronic packet, and I'm just going to go over this really briefly and then be happy to answer any questions. So before you today, I think this is one of the last steps in the review and approval of the intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, between the city and the county for the work that our office does related to economic development. And as part of the IGA, you also have a couple of attachments that we've been discussing as well. Attachment A to the IGA is details around our, what I've newly named, our Economic Development Coalition. That's a fresh name for what used to be EDAB, or the Economic Development Advisory Board. We did rename that. I think you all know the city has gone through and completed a review of our advisory board structures, and EDAB was one of those that was termed a multi-jurisdictional board, which is great, makes perfect sense because it's the county and the city. However, in full transparency, I find the word multi-jurisdictional, one, hard to spell, and two, not very approachable, and so I thought in the spirit of a name that better represented the work that we do together as a coalition, that Economic Development Coalition would better represent that and be a little easier to avoid typos, at least on my part. So that attachment A basically takes the outline of what used to be in our municipal code and codifies it in this agreement. I do think we're going to do some cleanup on the city side at some point, just to at least mention EDAB, excuse me, the EDC as a board, just to make sure, you know, if somebody's searching municipal code that they know is there and exists, but this is really the place where we wanted to outline how that group works, which we just brought over the information from before and a couple points of clarity. The second attachment, attachment B to the IGA, is our work plan. What you guys have is a final draft. Catherine was just able to finalize it this morning. We'll send that out to you. It was just missing a couple of graphs, so we'll send the final one, but nothing substantial has changed from the version that you've seen, other than those graphs. I did want to make a couple of points. On the IGA itself, the version that you have, props to my friend Mary Ottley, she caught an item that was a little bit unclear in section 3.1.1. We worked on that late last week to make a minor change, to create just a little more clarity in the wording of the money that comes to us as economic development, and then the portion of that money that we will pass through. Again, it's not a substantial change, but rather a clarification in terminology. And we also caught, I'm late, and I'm so sorry, that I feel so bad, my county partners, I think at the beginning, at the very title, it says the City of Corvallis slash name of government agency. So my friends, you are more the name of government agency. You are Benton County, and we will make that correction, and I apologize. Other than that, again, the IGA reflects what was discussed at the last meeting, following the presentation and review of the outside funding. So funding in the amount of $30,000 passed through to the SBDC and $25,760,000 to RAIN. Those are both one-year pass-throughs with the acknowledgement that our team will do the work through the latter half of this fiscal year to do that overarching gap analysis and review, bringing that back to you all for discussion and deliberation about how we focus and really do the best job possible leveraging the county's precious economic development funds. So total budget impact for this IGA is $149,384. That includes the pass-through to us for the work we do, and then the additional pass-through funds in the amounts already mentioned for SBDC and RAIN. So with that, I am happy to pause and answer any questions you might have on the IGA or the attachment.
Okay. We do have one more point to bring up from the IGA. It's in item 6.1, and again, as you said, we look at this language again and again, but we continue to find little things that don't make sense. If you look at that clause, it says either party may terminate this agreement effective June 30, 2021, which, in my calculation, was about a week ago. So, I think that that's a holdover from the previous IGA, and part of what that brought up was whether or not we wanted to continue to just update that to read June 30, 2023, or whether we want to say that we have a 90-day clause for, where either party can notify the other and terminate the agreement, so.
And Kate, I'll just say, it did just make perfect sense just to eliminate effective June 30, 2021, because this clause just says we have 90 days to terminate. By eliminating that little bit of this clause, there's zero ambiguity.
Thank you. That makes perfect sense to me, and we can make that change.
So when we do make a motion, we'll have to make a motion as corrected with this series of corrections?
Commissioner, I do have another question.
Okay.
Kate, on section 2.1.4, that particular paragraph, it does identify the Foundry Collective as an organization that you will contract out with, and based on the information that's presented in the rest of the agreement, it seems like that is not the case.
Correct. That should be struck. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
So it's changing the name of the agreement to the title, rather, the item in 6.1 and this item in 2.1.4. I believe that was it. I believe that was it.
I think that was the conclusion of our series.
And did you get the change that I had made, section 3.1.1?
Oh, 3.1.1.
Kate, it was a little unclear. Was that change reflected in the packet we have, or did that change come after the board received the packet?
That change came after you received the packet.
Okay. That was not clear to me. Thank you.
Yeah, so I have one, two, three, I have four changes. So the minor change, section 3.1.1, the title, section 6.1.1, removing the date, just leaving the 90 days, and then Joe's excellent catch on section 2.1.4, striking Foundry Collective. And for those watching, the reason we're striking Foundry Collective is they did not elect to submit an application for funding this year.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from Commissioner Malone?
Just a comment. I really appreciate the title, Economic Development Coalition. That has a nice ring to it. And what it replaced did not. So I appreciate nice, clear titles. And that was a good one. But I don't think I have any other comments on this, so I will move to approve the IGA between the city of Corvallis and Benton County for funding the economic development office through the 2021, 2023 time period with the four changes that have been mentioned.
Thank you. Well, second, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much, Kate. This has been a process this year, and we've seen you regularly. And I'm looking forward to hearing how the strategic planning and gap analysis goes in order to come back and figure out the best leveraged partnerships.
Thank you. No, and I so appreciate it. And I wondered, Chair Ojo, if you might indulge me, I have maybe 10 more minutes of updates to share with you on some other items. Is that, if you're jazza allowed?
It certainly does. And that would be great.
Okay, wonderful. So to all of these are happy news, which I think you will enjoy. So first of all, I wanted to let you know, as you may have seen, our partnership with the COGS had opened up some grants that were available for cities and counties. And our office applied for one grant for our office, which was just under $5,000, to help with the website work that we're looking to do to create this online business portal. It's an idea that our teammate Heather Stevens had found from San Francisco, where it's basically an easy-to-use portal. We like to do this for the whole county, where businesses can go, and depending on, oh my gosh, sorry, you guys, depending on if they're starting a business, or remodeling, or expanding, it's a very easy, intuitive way to use the site and get to the connections that they'll need in the different cities. So we got a little bit of money for that. And very exciting, we were able to help our friends in Monroe. Mayor Dan Chee applied for $10,000 for economic development planning for the city of Monroe, and he got a yes on that funding as well. And we will be at the table to help Dan with that. I think that, you know, they're going to be looking to hire a consultant to help them figure out what their next steps are down in Monroe. We're really, really excited for that. The other item that I know Dan is aware of, because she was a part of the ceremony, was our office was just so very tickled to be the recipient of this year's Oregon Economic Development Association Collaborative Partnership of the Year award. And this is kind of a big deal in our economic development world. This is a statewide recognition. We nominated our partnership with the EOC, which was an unusual setup. And I know you guys have heard this. I think that we got used to it, like this is how we did it in Benton County. And I told you this before, it didn't work this well or this way in other counties. The fact that you all as leaders, and our leadership in Brian and Dave, saw the need to bring economic development and the business partners to the table at the EOC was so beneficial for our businesses. And we just are so grateful for that and have now received this acclaim about that partnership. So with that, I think I've let Erica know, but Heather put together a really neat video from the partners, so not hearing from me, but our partners about this work. And if you have, I think it's just five minutes, we'd be happy to show that to you now.
You should be ready to proceed, Kate.
Great, thank you, Heather. And hopefully, let me know. I want to make sure this will work okay for you guys. And let me know if you cannot hear or see. Let me share my screen. One second.
And congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you. Thank you so much, you guys. Okay. And here we go. And let me know if you're not able to hear this.
One of the biggest benefits that we had was that we were able to get timely updates to our members of the little businesses, me, Corvallis, and Benton County. And, you know, just the availability with everything changing so quickly in the time. It's just really nice to be able to, you know, have a partnership that we can rely on and work with.
I think one of the greatest benefits was connectedness. Nobody really knew what was happening or what was going on. There were a lot of side conversations. This partnership brought everything into one room under one go of conversation. And not only did it help people perform, it also, I think, helped connect organizations that normally might not even have a conversation.
You know, one of the benefits of the partnership came in the way that I was actually heard. And it was, I only knew me, to just understand all of the different things that an emergency operation center does. But also, I think, one of the benefits of the service in that, to give the role, was also to educate government. And Dan loved how the real realities and problems that the hotels and hotels were handling.
I think the main benefit was street line information. So one of the big problems that we ran into early on in the pandemic is there's a ton of misinformation out there. There was a ton of news sources, most people finding on my Facebook, so like, I'm kind of untrustable, that were sending out a lot of just brand up, sometimes, misinformation. And then the EOC, Benton County, basically came along and basically told us, like, okay, here are the actual guidelines, here's the actual rule of law.
So through this partnership, we were able to establish the business right-of-way program by hearing from restaurants, you know, what was going on, and that they needed help and they needed a change. And I could reach out to economic development, who is within this city, and could talk to public work, through transportation and parking, and they could work out all the inside details with the rest of the other city departments. And then on my end, you know, I can help relay all the information that this program is becoming available, and here's how you sign up for it.
We rolled through a ton of different problems. And in December, you had a bunch of brand-new businesses that started either late in 2019 or early 2020. We found weren't eligible for the IDL, PPT, or some of the other CARES Act grants, because they didn't have a basis tax year to go off of. And one of the discussions that we had, you know, we did these, was like, how do we make sure that businesses are still served, still have access to resources? And so you guys put together a $5,000 grant system, which is CARES Act funded. And we actually had two businesses that were on the verge of closing. One opened in a gym here on Knight Street that had opened up, she had actually purchased a gym, somebody else, in, I think, December of 19, and officially the partnership in January. Then one is, then actually the Korean barbecue, who's actually next to the store of Harley Kitchen. They already lose, even Bush has a second, they were business owners. And so a lot of the impression that they were getting was there was a gap in understanding. And you pointed me toward, here's, you know, all of the different arrangements on that rental assistance. And so they applied, but they had no idea what was going on with the price of that food, and they said, they got $3,000. And that was absolutely the difference that they were surviving at that time. Some of those programs that you guys worked on, and also disseminated to our group, so we could get a ton of people that hated that, were really difficult to see a lot of business success.
It wouldn't seem easy to get through the pandemic without having economic development talking about what the businesses needed at the emergency operations table, you know, to, for them to be able to communicate with the city manager, with the mayor, with even the commissioners, like, they could get the word out of what was happening and help to bring about changes that were beneficial for businesses.
It's a unique place. We certainly have a unique relationship with the economic development office here in Benton County. And yeah, it's just not something you see a lot of around the state.
So without having a partnership with the economic development office, and then also serving in the emergency operations center, they don't know that true communication would have happened.
It really does show a lot of times the disconnect between what we perceive as government. And so bridging that gap in that key things, and getting to know some of the people that you don't necessarily work with under other circumstances.
Three words, how do you describe the partnership as supportive, reliable, and cooperative?
I would say unique, efficient, and collaborative. Collaborative, positive, compassionate.
So I would say that three words that really define the partnership are community, efficiency, and collaboration.
Collaboration.
Collaboration. And friendship.
Mary Sweet.
All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate the time, and I just would leave you by saying, that group of people, that group of organizations that we call the economic recovery, we were meeting at the height of the pandemic, three times a week to coordinate efforts, hearing from them what businesses were needing, and disseminating back out information. And so I guess, again, I want to say thank you to all the partners. I want to say thank you to you all and the folks at the EOC. Your funding, your partnership, like, made all the difference for our businesses in Benton County. And I think they all are better off because of these efforts. So thank you very much. And that concludes my happy update for the day. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Kate, I had a comment that statewide recognition kind of beat me to what I was going to say, but just your team's efforts in the last 16 months have been impressive. There was no roadmap to go by, and we were all kind of winging it and hoping that the ledge we were jumping off wasn't too far a fall. But very impressive effort. As your folks were talking, I was remembering probably a year ago, April, and, well, we've got to get, we have some money, we need to help businesses. We saw Lane County's example of helping a few businesses that were quick on the trigger. And you and your team developed, I think, a very thoughtful approach, and we're going to do a lottery rather than who's ever the quickest. And I think that was a good indication of your team, you and your team's capability of responding to unprecedented circumstances. So I'm glad that you got more recognition than I can give you this morning. But the idea of partnerships and collaboration, and I hope some of the lessons that we've learned in this adventure can serve us going forward. And maybe without the scramble for time and being able to be more thoughtful. And we now know who our partners, who some of our partners are that we didn't know before this started. So I'm always hopeful that hard-won lessons can serve us in the future.
Thank you so much. Completely agree.
And the other point I would love to highlight is that we, it's not all over yet, and there are certainly businesses that are still struggling as we emerge from what I hope was some of the worst of this pandemic. So we will be looking to you and your team and our networks to continue to survey our businesses and to understand what the pressures are that they're facing, and whether the federal resources that are out there are sufficient, and where the gaps are, so that as we move forward, we can continue to support the community and keep our businesses viable. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet. And I think the work through the latter part of this year will really help us focus in on and understand where those needs are and where those gaps are, so that we can make sure that we're providing the best support to the people who need it most in a way that is most helpful to them, right? So yeah, thank you for your kind words.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Well, thank you, Kate. Look forward to moving on and doing good work. And with that, we have reached the end of our agenda, and the meeting is adjourned at Do you need any break?
Nope. I'm ready to roll.
Okay. We are, I need to check with Erica to make sure she's ready. Okay. I will open the Alpine County Service District Governing Board meeting. And our first item of business is to hear from the public. Hearing no comments, we will move on to the consent calendar. We have two matters, the matter of certifying to the county assessor delinquent accounts for co-allocation under ORS 454.225, and approval of the June 15, 2021 meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have, having no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 10:08 a.m. Our next meeting is of the Alcee County Service District Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will consider the consent calendar, which also contains the matter of certifying to the county assessor delinquent accounts for collection under ORS 454.225, and approval of the June 15, 2021 meeting minutes.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the Alcee County Service District.
Second, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The consent calendar is approved. And having no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 10:09 a.m. If I don't slow down, they'll all be at the same time. Okay. We will now open the South Third County Service District Governing Board meeting. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the consent calendar, certifying to the county assessor delinquent accounts, and approving the June 15, 2021 meeting minutes.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the South Third. Move to approve the consent calendar for the South Third County Service District.
Second, all in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Having no other business before us, this meeting of the South Third County Service District is adjourned. And with that, our business for this morning is concluded.
Good job.
This conference is no longer being recorded.